I was meeting the order at seven oh five P M. Madam Clerk's office. Councilmember O. Basil Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Proton Aparano.
Yep.
And Mayor Bernhardt.
Here.
And Councilmember Mendoza, absent for the record. Would everybody please stand to the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Murray, do we need a small French?
Sure. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in its small but their true strength.
Mr. Murray, do we have any?
Any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Turner, do we have any um anything to report on closed session?
Yes, the council met in closed session and discussed three active uh litigation matters as listed on the agenda. Direction was given to council on each item. The council also discussed conference with labor negotiators as listed um on the agenda. Direction was given to the negotiators. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, now move on to public comment. For matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor at that time. Please state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments for tonight? Sir, please step up to the podium.
Uh, I guess I have to state my name?
Yes, your name and address for the record, please.
David Graham, six oh nine North C Street, Imperial. I've been here as a citizen of the city of Imperial for fifty-three years. Um. What the problem is that I need to discuss is is uh we have a construction project going on with the Duggans Construction. And um I've been trying to get a straight answer from somebody from the city, but I haven't been able to get a straight answer from anybody because uh they started working at five o'clock in the morning. Is there anything that can be done about them starting to work so early? Cause I made a noise complaint. The police department didn't do anything about it. It's happened before with Duggans. And nothing was done about it. Cause the police department didn't know. What can we do? It's a noise complaint. They should be going over there and saying, hey, you know what? So what can the city do about this? Because I'm sick. I don't know if you know me. I'm sick. I'm not supposed to be out here in the heat. If you can see the tubes, I can get infections and die, but I'm here because of this. The Duggans Construction Company has done so many things and they uh make promises like uh we weren't supposed to get closed off from our backyards. And we have a fence that blocks us off, so are we gonna get our access back to our backyard again? That's one of my questions. The other one is like the time that they can start. What time? Because no city employee knows when they can start working. Five o'clock in the morning for me is way too dang early. I wake up at four o'clock in the morning to go to dialysis for three days a week, and then I have to wake up at five in the morning because these people are starting to work at five o'clock in the morning. So can anybody that's, cause I've called called the city about the 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 building department about it. I had never gotten any answer about it. And so I need to know, when can these people start working? Cause they make a lot of freaking noise.
Sir, as the as the city attorney, I would like to have a a conversation with you tomorrow after I double check. Um, it depends on whether it's a conditional use permit or it's our ordinance. So I just wanna double check because I don't wanna be giving the wrong information to you.
That's what I wanna find out is there an ordinance? Because nobody knows. Like I said, I I had the police called on me at one o'clock in the afternoon because I have my stereo on. I have three police officers out there getting on me about my music at one o'clock. These guys are doing this stuff at five in the freaking morning.
And and I'll be able to answer that that for you.
Well, if you can call me, I'll leave you uh
Thank you.
Cause I, like I said, I'm not supposed to be out here in the heat, cause this thing can get infected and I can die. I'm not exaggerating. The doctor tells me I can die if I get an infection. I also have something else that I wanted to talk about if I need to, if I can do it now or not. And it's about city employees. Uh, I've had a city employee come over and threaten to find me, threaten to take my vehicle away out of my driveway. I mean, can you guys do that? And then next thing you know, he comes over and tells me to put new tires on my car. I I'm blind. I can't drive my car right now. I have tires that only have three thousand miles. I'm not gonna go out and replace them because the city employee is telling me to go out and replace them. He hasn't told me what the problem is about it. But, cause he hasn't discussed nothing with me about it. And I've been, I've have I had these problems with him for a while. So can a a city employee tell me that they can tow my car and charge me for it out of my driveway for some reason, even though the neighbors have vehicles all over the place? They have work trucks and stuff parked in the alley all over the place, but somehow he bugs me about my car and my stuff. But he doesn't hit the neighbors for having vehicles off their property for years. And then there's cars all over the streets that have been parked for years. And I mean, when I say years, eight, nine, ten years out in the streets. But this person doesn't see these things. And then my last thing, if I can say it. Um, when we have a problem with a city employee, and I'll just tell you straight out, police department. Who can we report that to? Because I was walking through the park one day when I was working, trying to catch the bus. I have a police officer stop me, and I know this isn't legal. You're the attorney. Let me know if it is or not. Police officer stops me and calls me over. So I'm like, well, I I'm a lawful citizen. So I go over to see what he wants. I just wanna get to know you. I gotta get to work. If I don't get to work on the bu- and I had to take the bus to El Central, I get fired. Cause the job I had, they'll fire you just for that, showing up late. This officer held me and held me. I finally left because I said, did I do anything? Okay, bye. I gotta go. I gotta catch the bus. The other officer that was training stepped in my way and kept me from leaving. Okay, so you're the attorney for the city. They wouldn't let me go until I showed them an I D. And then they ran me for warrants and they finally let me go. Can, you're the city attorney, can your officers, because I went to complain to the 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 police chief. And when I started talking about his officers, about the stuff that they were doing, cause I had two run-ins with the police department. Everybody that knows me, I don't get in trouble normally for anything, especially when I'm trying to get to work. You know, and I'm being held and possibly get fired because a police officer is holding me. You know?
Sir, I encourage you to make a meeting with our city manager and our city attorney, and they'll handle all of your issues that you have.
Well, I I went to the police chief. The police chief, all he did was he called somebody to come shut his door, so he didn't hear what I'm saying. I couldn't go to the police department. I asked who I could talk to, and nobody told me.
Sir, I'm telling you to talk to our city manager, make an appointment with our city manager, and our city attorney, and they will handle these issues.
Unluckily, I'm, it's too hot. Like I said, I get bacteria in this. I die. I can't be out in the heat.
Sir, we can do that, and they are in the office. Yes, they can give you a call.
They could talk to me on the phone.
Yes. If you leave your phone number, Mr. Merito will give you his card, or you can leave your phone number with him, and we'll resolve these issues.
Well, I'm blind, so I can't see it either way.
Okay, can you tell him your phone number then, so he can give you a call tomorrow?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we will move on. Do we have any other public comments for tonight? Madam Clerk, do we receive any of you email? Oh, perfect. Now we'll move on to special presentations um with A one recognition of the Imperial High School Girls Varsity Softball Team. So as most of you know, um, the city, we as a city, we just wanted to recognize that our softball girls won C I F, and they went all the way to s- um the state semifinals, and we wanted to give each of you a certificate um and recognize you for your great um season that you had. So, um, are we gonna call everybody to the front? Okay, so we'll just call everybody up to the front. We have a certificate for everybody. Um. Yeah, and then we'll stand back here and we'll take a group photo, if that works for you guys. Um, Alexa Roblox? She never, okay. Andrea De La Trinada? Casvia? Anika Lara? Emma Infanta Infante? I apologize in advance if I butcher your names. Hannah Johnson? Jayden Redalich? Isabel Rodriguez? Mariella Barron? Alyssa Campos? Jalen Monzon? Clarissa Dopula? Madeline Magdaleno? Johnny Redlich? Uh, and we have Coach Steve Caro?
We'll squeeze in. Want to squeeze in?
No, I I already changed. Opening? Yeah, we can open.
Um, yeah, so congratulations, ladies. I look forward to seeing you guys uh do really well again next season. And so now we'll move on to A two trunk or treat event evening featuring Drifters Car Club.
Yeah, uh Nancy Aparano uh will be presenting this to the council.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I wanted to thank you all for letting us come tonight and just inform you of an uh an event that we'll have coming up. It's an additional event to those that are currently on our roster. It uh, we're happy to announce that we'll be partnering with uh the Drifters Car Club to hold our first annual trunk or treat event. It'll be at Eager Park on October twenty-seventh from six to ten. Um, you can see up there on the screen, uh, we'll be having live music, food vendors, contests, prizes, and many more fun things that are um yet to be determined. Uh, the sim- the the event layout will be similar to the last couple events that we had at Eager Park, which were the Autism Fair and in the Park After Dark. Uh, the setup will be similar to those. Um. The idea of this partnership, it came up at our last event. They um, the Drifters Car Club uh came to us and and gave us this idea for consideration to bring the event here to Imperial. And a couple, of course, we loved it, and that's why we're here tonight. But um we have some of the representatives of the car club here with us tonight, and I'm just gonna invite them up so that they can answer any questions that you may have, and maybe go over the history of the event and why they wanted to bring it to Imperial.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry about that.
No need to apologize.
Good evening. My name is Joe Busso, and I'm a member of the uh Drifters Car Club. I'd like to give you a little brief history of the Drifters Car Club and the trunk trunk or treat show. The club, the club was formed in the year two thousand by local car enthusiasts, primarily to hang out, talk about cars, share ideas, would have not, and participate in some of these car shows, would have not. As the club grew, we started to support a lot of the charitable uh organizations, helping out on different type of uh needs for the community. And we would do that by having some events and do some fundraising. One of our activities to raise some of that money is to support some of these groups was the trunk or treat. In the first year, first time we had it, maybe we had about fifteen cars, not that many. Um, just a few kids come around trick or treating, which is fine. By the ninth event, we had over a hundred cars, all decked out, and Halloween. I mean, we brought a little uh sample here of some of our past events, so you could say um, pretty fun night. But uh we had over a hundred cars all decked out. And we had over, I mean, it it was hundreds of kids we were passing candies out to. We're talking about eighty, a hundred dollars per vehicle, just to be able to provide as much candy as we could for all these kids. There were so many. That was the last event. Uh, due to COVID, we haven't had an event for the last three years. Um, last year, however, uh, City of El Centro, we used to have our event at the uh Foot for Less parking lot, and we were very thankful for them to allow us to use that uh parking lot. It was, it was a good venue. Um, but last year we had uh the City of El Centro had their own trunk or treat. And we went out, we had a nice event, well attended, a lot of kids, a lot of, a lot of activities. That was fine. Um, Christ Community also has a little trunk or treat for the City of El Centro, which is fine, great. We participate with them. We help them out as well. Uh, but this year being that it appears that City of El Centro is gonna be taking over a trunk or treat, which is fine. Give something for the community. That's what we, what it's all about. Uh, we decided to move this event. Uh, we were here at the uh dark, what is it? The Park After Dark event. Well, well attended and brought up the idea of maybe having this as a venue. Uh, City of Imperial hasn't had a drunk or treat per se, so we'd like to be able to bring that experience over to your city. And we're really happy that uh we're working with uh both Tony and and Nancy. Uh, we're really looking forward to having a fun event.
Sir, we're really, we're uh really happy to have you and have this event within the city of Imperial. Um. My, I know my kids will look forward to it, so.
Thank you.
Same here. I I did get a chance to see the vehicles that you guys had at the uh Park After Dark, and that was a nice addition to that event, so glad you guys are part of Imperial. Thank you.
I also just wanted to take a a minute to mention that we do have another event that's coming up in just a couple of weeks. It's the end of summer bash. It's gonna be August eleventh from six to nine. It's gonna be an Imperial pool, and it's gonna be a luau themed event that's gonna mark the end of summer, so hopefully everyone can make it out to that one.
Now moving on to item A three, uh I V nine eleven stair climb event.
Good evening, uh Mayor Bernworth, city council members, community members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak uh this evening. My name is Carlos Pitonis. Uh, sitting down as well is Mike Harvey and Tiffany Macias. We are members of the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial and stair climb committee. Our committee is formed of members that represent the firefighter community, the law enforcement community, and public and private organizations who are dedicated to ensuring that the Imperial Valley never forgets the tragic events that took place on September eleventh, two thousand and one. We do this by hosting a memorial stair climb that honors, respects, and pays tribute to three hundred and forty-three F D N Y firefighters, the sixty law enforcement personnel, and the ten emergency medical personnel who made the ultimate sacrifice as a result of the terrorist attacks on that Tuesday morning in two thousand and one. This year marks the twenty-second anniversary of September eleventh. And for the Imperial Valley, we will host the tenth annual nine eleven memorial and stair climb event. We host it at the grandstands here in the Imperial Valley fairgrounds. This year it will be on Saturday, September ninth. The memorial ceremony will begin at seven forty-five P M, followed by our stair climb at eight P M. Our memorial stair climb is a way for the community to come together to remember their heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice on September eleventh. Each participant will climb or walk the equivalent of a hundred and ten stories of the World Trade Center, carrying the name and the photo of a fallen hero to symbolically complete their climb. At this time, I'd like to show you a video of last year's event. Um, the video will show uh the memorial ceremony and part of the uh the walk that the participants took place in. Uh, last year's ceremony was a little different than previous ceremonies because of the weather. Um, uh, this year we hope to incorporate the grandstands again uh for this year's event. If we can have that video. Um, uh, this year we hope to incorporate the grandstands again uh for this year's event. If we can have that video. It's a family friendly event uh held here in, in our great city of Imperial. Uh, just to cover some of the details of the event, uh registration, we do have early registration for participants. Uh, it is open now through September eighth, the day before the event for twenty-five dollars. And then we do have onsite registration on the day of the event for thirty-five dollars, starting at six PM, so a few hours before the, the actual event kicks off. Uh, participants that register before August twenty-fifth will be able to receive their event T-shirt on, on the day of the event. Uh, anybody who registers after the twenty-fifth will receive their T-shirt after the event at some point. Um, registration can be completed at www dot IV nine one one dot org or nine eleven dot org. Um, in addition to stair climb participants or stair climb walkers or walkers. Uh, we're also looking for sponsors and vendors to join us in making our event as successful as possible. Sponsorship opportunities come in four different levels ranging from three hundred and forty-three dollars and each number is significant to, to nine eleven. Uh, four hundred thirteen, which is the total amount of firefighters, law enforcement personnel, and emergency medical personnel who made the ultimate sacrifice. Uh, nine hundred and eleven dollars for, for nine eleven and two thousand and one dollars for two thousand and one for the year. And each level receiving different degrees of recognition, advertisement, event memorabilia, and sponsorship dinner invitations. For a, a dinner that we host for sponsor appreciation a few weeks after the event. Uh, vendors can also register for our event and no charge, but will agree to donate ten percent of their earnings to the event. Of the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial and stair climb event. Uh, funds that are raised during this event will go to the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial stair climb five oh one C three. That will provide charitable assistance to local firefighters and their families, will also promote scholarship opportunities for members of the community. And they will also assist us in developing the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial that we uh would like to build at the entrance of the fairgrounds here in Imperial as well. Um, in closing, I want to thank you for this opportunity to present this information. Uh, we invite everyone in the Imperial Valley to come out, to join us, whether it's as a spectator, as a participant, a sponsor, or even a vendor. Uh, we appreciate the assistance in having the Imperial Valley observe and remember this special day. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll take them at this time.
Questions? Questions, comments from the council?
I would just say like past years, I think we need to get Imperial's team together again and try to beat out some of those other cities that we do visit or do show up. I know last year El Centro had a big showing, so maybe we can go back and try to help them out. I know Jackie is there, but in a different capacity. But uh, that's uh, respect to that, cause you know, that's, that's tough also, but um, so maybe we can do something, so.
Perfect. Challenge accepted. Thank you, guys. Moving on to item A four, update on North Point Development Project, um Imperial Hotel.
Good evening, uh Mayor Bernworth, City Council, and members of the community. Um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give an update on our North Point development. My name is Victor Nava, Director of Strategy Development and Partnerships for GAFCON. And first off, I would like to introduce our new team member Fernando Ramos. Um, he's our new Director of Project of Operations in Imperial Valley. His career spans thirty-plus years as a project manager and engineer in multiple roles and industries. Uh, we are very proud to have another local hire that will assist us with our current and future development and projects, so. Want to welcome, wanted to introduce you to Fernando.
I'm welcome.
So to, to moving on, uh, update on the hotel. So we're very pleased with our progress um on the hotel. Uh, the drywall and painting are substantially completed on the fourth and third floors. Uh, drywall is being installed in the second floor and lobby is being prepped for drywall. So we're really uh looking at the progress from the top floors all the way to the bottom and that's coming along. Contractors are working on the restaurant kitchen, elevator pits, and lobby areas at this time. U S supply chain issues have affected the delivery of the three elevators and electrical switchgear. Uh, these items were ordered a year in advance and scheduled to be delivered December of, uh, end of this year and January twenty twenty-four. So once these items are installed, inspected, and approved, the hotel is expected to open quarter two of next year of twenty twenty-four. So in addition to the hotel on the corner of Nickel and eighty-six, well, actually, let me go back to the pictures, a couple of pictures. That's actually one of our, actually, that's the hallway of the fourth floor, so as you can tell, the uh, the ceiling is painted and drywall is prepped for painting. If you go to the next slide, that's one of our larger suites, again, painted and ready uh for flooring. And then the next slide, uh, that's actually one of our smaller rooms, uh, prepped and ready for flooring as well, so. Super excited to see the progress and um, you know, we look forward to, to, to moving on uh with the project on that, that aspect. So in addition to the hotel on the corner of eighty-six and Nickel, we are pleased to share with you that we have signed a lease with Circle K. For the corner of, of, for that corner, it'll include a gas station, convenience store, car wash, and EV charging station. So that'll be their largest uh Circle K in Imperial County. And then we're also pleased with the progress that we're making on intercare healthcare uh complex. Uh, we hope to have groundbreaking, uh, hopefully in the next, uh, next six to eight weeks, so super excited about that. Any questions?
Excited to see it going up.
Yeah. There's that picture is different from last time I seen it when it was just all wood and frame, so um, definitely nice change.
You're welcome for the council to do a tour as well if you want to continue and maybe the next uh three to four weeks you'll see more progress, so.
Air conditioning in there?
Um, a kitchen?
No, the air conditioning. Trying it out for winter, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's gonna be, I can't al- already imagine how it sounds good.
My son and I did a tour at the beginning of, well, mid-June, so I think we'll refine until it cools off to the next one.
I do remember the groundbreaking. We did take a picture inside in front of the bar.
Mr. Nava, it will have conference capability?
Yeah, we will have an event center and a pre-functioning area as well for events. It'll ho- hopefully hold about a hundred and seventy-five people. So we do have renderings of that now, what it's gonna look like, so. Yeah, as progress happens, we're already getting inquiries, by the way, for people to reserve that and as, people don't even have any seen it, so it's pretty interesting.
Then you can, it's safe to say everybody's excited to get this hotel done. Um, probably know more than you guys, but yes.
Still see it from my backyard.
Yeah.
When did you say the possible opening?
Uh, Q one, um, April first, we're targeting. It could be sooner. If we get the elevators sooner, then it'll be uh around that, it'll be before April first, but.
They've been ordered since uh a year ago, so we're hoping to get the uh, the elevators by, by the end of this year. And then I will get the switchgear uh.
And do you know when you're gonna break ground on the intercare facility?
Hopefully in the next six to eight weeks.
Okay, great.
We look forward to having that event and inviting the council and staff to be out there as well. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to consent agenda, item B, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do you have a motion for the consent?
Please miss, uh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to also read out loud, um, one of the items on consent is adoption of, uh, in reading by title only. Ordinance number eight twenty-seven, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Imperial amending the codified ordinances of the City. Of Imperial adjusting Imperial County City Compensation to seven hundred and twenty dollars per month.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by um, Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. You, um, moving on to item C, public hearing items, um. C one, public hearing approving the engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. For the Imperial lighting maintenance district number one, Paseo del Sol and Wildflower subdivision, staff report with Mr. Herrera. Oh, yeah, then I open this public hearing uh seven forty-one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, by way of a, by way of a brief uh staff report, I believe we have uh our interim finance person, John Herrera. Uh, we also have a representative from uh Koppel and Gruber to the extent you have any technical questions with respect to the information contained. In, in the materials uh that are before you. Um, a- as you know, as, and, and wh- my comment will apply to the next three items on, on the agenda. Uh, basically, you will be holding uh public hearings on all of those items to, uh, as the, uh, as the mayor read. Uh, to uh approve of the engineer's report and all, and staff is also recommending approval. Of the uh levy and collection of, of the amount set forth in those reports. As you, as you know, the amounts set forth are, are uh, uh, basically designed to uh pay for the items that are listed. Either uh in the case of uh lighting and, and also separately, you'll be considering of the landscape uh aspect of it. And so uh, obviously, the first one uh repai- uh relates to the uh Paseo del Sol and Wildflower uh lighting aspect. So if you have any uh questions of either the uh, uh Koppel and, and, and Gruber folks or our interim finance. They, they would be prepared to answer any uh technical question that you might have.
Questions? Public comments? Seeing none, I'll close this hearing at seven forty-two PM. Um, do you have any recommended actions? Do you have any motions?
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-five.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Uh, please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Make a motion um to adopt number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six.
A motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item C two, uh, public hearing approving the engineer's report and ordering. The levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four for the Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number one. Uh, Paseo, Del Sol, and Wildflower subdivisions, um. And I'll open this hearing at seven forty-three PM.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I, I have no additional comment other than uh beyond what I indicated with respect to the first one. This is, uh, relates to the landscape portion for the uh Paseo, Del Sol, and Wildflower. Uh, subdivisions and staff recommends approval of the uh, uh resolutions after hearing uh any uh public comment. Uh, you might have and, and of course answering any questions you might have.
Have any public comments? Seeing none. Uh, I'll close this hearing at seven forty-four PM. And do you have any questions, comments, or a motion from the council?
Make a motion to approve um adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. A motion for the second action.
I'm make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Yeah, and then we'll move on to items D, action items. Um, for item D one, I need to recuse myself. I work for a subcontractor that may be utilized in one of the post-proposed contracts, this qualifies. C three? Oh my gosh, they all look the same. Okay, moving on to item C three, public hearing approving the engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the fiscal year. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four for the Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number two. Zone two thousand five, desks zero three for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four in Sky Ranch. And I'll open this public hearing at seven forty-six. Do I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Ma- Mayor and Council, uh, same exercise with respect to uh Sky Ranch. Uh, you have the engineer's report uh before you and staff recommends a, if uh, uh, after taking a public comment, if you have any questions. Uh, we have uh, uh, Mr. Herrera and the Koppel and Gruber folks available to answer any questions you might have.
Public comments, I will close this at seven forty-seven PM. Do you have any questions, comments, or a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Lastly, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five zero fifty.
Second then.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank the Koppel and, um, making the, Koppel and Gruber folks making themselves available and also uh John who. Uh, is joining us in the middle of the night from his uh vacation.
Yes, thank you, all of you.
Thanks, John. Thank you, everyone.
Um, now we'll move on to D, action items. Uh, for item D one, I work for a subcontractor that might be utilized in one of the proposed contracts. Um, and the, the law, this qualifies as a remote interest. Um, I'm not involved and won't be involved. And have no ownership of interest of any of this kind. I actually don't even work on any of these type of projects, so um. Mayor Proton Tim Operano is gonna present this item for me.
All right, so item D one, award on call planning services to uh HWL, GAFCON, and LC Engineering and staff report with.
Um, good evening, council. As you may already know, um, the city has a full service planning division. Uh, but from time to time, due to the workload, we need, we're in need of a con- consultants, uh, well qualified firms that can help us. Uh, uh, with some of the projects. Uh, we released an RFP, we received three proposals and after carefully review. Uh, staff recommends uh to award a contract to HWL, GAFCON, and LC Engineering and ask them for any questions that you may have.
Oh, just for the, like, what do you normally use?
The land use entitlements mostly, it's uh, uh, variances, conditional use permits, uh, zone change, zoning tax amendments, uh, just to mention a few.
Questions?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, also for, um, just for the record, um, this is not gonna have an impact uh on our budget. It's a pass-through cost. It will all be paid through uh developer, developer deposits.
HWL and GAFCON is three different companies?
There's three different.
So what we're doing is approving you to use any, is that what?
Any of those, yes. We usually do a, uh, in, during my rotation.
Okay.
That's how we do it with the, the other companies, the engineering and the building and safety as well.
But they're all different style of companies. They do all different. But they're all different style of companies, they do all different things.
They're doing different things, correct.
And so let's, let's, uh James, do you have any other questions? Uh let's look at L C Engineering, do we have any other engineering firms that applied? They were the only one?
The only three, yes.
Um and then same thing with H W L and GAFCON, the only ones that applied?
That is correct.
Is, is there any uh burden or financial impact for these services that we have, I know it says there's, it's a pass-through, but let's say we have uh issues that come back to us? Or is it something?
We have issues, the idea we have, uh we can always uh, you know, remove the contract.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve um the uh award on call plan to services H W L, um GAFCON and L C Engineering.
A motion?
Second.
Second by Mister Tucker, please vote.
Motion carries three one with the one abstain by Mayor Burnworth.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, on item D two, Victoria Rent Subdivision, unit number three B, sewer lift station acceptance, uh staff report with a thon more.
Good evening, Council, um this item is for the sewer lift station locator on Ayton and Legakis on the sa- southwest corner of Ayton and Legakis within the Victoria Ranch subdivision, um all improvements have been completed and is fully functional. Um staff recommends acceptance and recording of the granted and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments or a motion from the council?
Good on this one.
We're lift stations.
Have a second? Have a motion by Tucker and a second by Amparano, please vote. Motion carries four zero, have a motion for the second recommended action.
Ordinance of grant D for sewer lift station from Imperial Ranch Partners, L L C.
Have a motion by Tucker and a second by Amparano, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item D three, purchase of portable office container with police, staff report with Police Chief Michael Crankshaw.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, uh thank you for your time. In direct connection to the growth of of the city and then specific to the department with the personnel and equipment needed. Um the usable space in our current facility, as we all know, is at capacity. Um with that lack of of space, we we uh determined that this would be a suitable possibility uh as to utilize a fully renovated uh forty-foot container office. Uh we went out and got some pricing. Um one of the the purposes of this is to create that that first void area so we can start working the workspace within the department. This container would be divided in uh two sections, an eight-by-fourteen foot office uh uh and then a eight-by-twenty-six foot uh equipment area. Both would be climate-controlled with a one point five uh mini-split and it would be painted the same colors as our current building. It would go where the command vehicle used to be. We're in the process right now of of getting some shade and move the command vehicle onto it, uh onto the yard, uh over at the city yard. It would have uh the bars and it would have the the doors, uh it would be facing inside towards that that area that we normally had that command vehicle at. Um with the use of this, it's allow us to not only store all of our equipment, but in a controlled environment, it's gonna prolong that equipment. Its life, its shelf life, and uh the office space is actually going to be uh one of our sergeants who will be doing the quartermastering of all of our equipment on top of some of the other uh collateral duties that they'll be taking on, uh and then the beauty of this is if we ever need to use it for a different department or ever you need to move it to a different location, it picks up and goes, so uh we feel it's a, it's a great uh be a great uh piece for our department and it would work out well for us. Um would be very minor prep work on the ground that's already there, it was just class B and we have a small connection um to, it's less than twelve feet there. And the impact, uh we'd be asking to use the development impact visas is directly related to the the growth of the department, so. Yeah, I stand for any questions?
Where the funds coming from?
Uh it's Fund sixty-five, our city developmental impact fee, specific to uh the P D in this case. Um which is related to that type of activity.
If approved tonight, what is the timeframe?
Six to eight weeks.
To get the container here or get it all up and running?
Well, uh I think that within that timeframe, we can have it prepped ready to go, I was advised it'd be six to eight weeks delivered and placed. And then it's a matter of a connection, at that point, it's it's up and running within a week or so.
It's no surprise, I mean, to us as a council that you guys are asking for more space, I mean, you go into the police department and you guys are in very tight quarters, so.
It uh it has been a challenge, uh not just for the police department, for everyone.
Yeah.
Um and I think that we are, we're, we're being creative in the way that we're solving these problems.
Working with what we got. Thank you, I appreciate that. I have a motion by Amparano, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Item D four, sees emergency repairs for city wastewater lines and alleyways, uh staff report with Jackie Looper.
Several months back, we had of the line, we've made some temporary repairs to try to get through the summer and we have all the parts to replace the line, but we're going to try to nurse it on down the road about six, eight, ten weeks till the weather breaks before we tear the alley up and replace the line from behind the grocery store all the way down to Zarabi.
Play me on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Obaso Martinez, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to item E one, department reports, do any departments have anything to report, Police Chief?
Yes, I just wanna report on today, we had an event uh with the uh a fire in the uh in the morning time over off of uh Lumber Tree Road. Uh three of those uh structures were uh burned out. We have a uh individual in custody for arson for that and it was booked in the Imperial County Jail. Uh so I just wanted to make you guys aware or take any questions you may have or or Chief Flores. Um if you have any questions, I'll take that now. All good?
I don't have any questions, I thank you for catching the guy who did it.
Appar- apparently the he may uh had some issues over in El Central doing the same thing, so. Um I did wanna touch on coming up towards uh, we're we're dusting off our youth police cadet program. And uh hopefully we'll be working with Tony and everyone else to uh for twenty to twenty-five individuals to come on and uh there's some really neat stuff that's coming up. We also have found a coordinator for our reserve program and right now there's an outstanding uh new group of cadets, our uh academy cadets out at I V C that we want to really try to connect with.
Yes.
Um we are also in the uh uh with Jackie. We're we're making progress on repairing the kennels. And so we're hopefully we'll have something towards uh, you know, in the next couple of weeks towards uh for the council to to uh review. And then finally, uh just we've, we've had good uh implementation on the various uh new tech- technology with the police department as was uh requested for this fiscal year, so. Thank you.
Have any other staff reports? Mister Lopez? Kristen?
I'd just like to um piggyback off of the chief's uh news on his um uh cadet and reserve program that we also have uh nine positions currently open for recruitment. And so we'd encourage anyone who's interested to take a look at our city website careers page, um if you're interested in taking a look and apply.
Very exciting.
Yeah, that's funny here, we're as a council, yay, let's let's get more people, this, you know, and everybody else is trying to not do that and we're like, yes, let's get more.
We need them.
Yes, so we wanna make sure we're here to support you guys and give you guys what you need, so.
City manager report.
Yeah, uh yes, Mayor and Council, ca- on on that note, um uh uh you may see some new faces, you may, you may call and hear an unfamiliar voice and and uh so we, yeah, so we will try to keep up with keeping you advised of what's happening in that regard. Uh and so I I will ha- I I'd like to take a moment to just thank uh staff because uh in 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 the course of br- bringing new people on, you 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 all know uh that we are, the facility we're in is 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 defined geographically and so we are doing our best to make sure that as we bring folks on, they'll have a a workspace. Uh I I I T is wor- working hard to make sure that they have the equipment they they need. Uh and and of course, all the departments are uh are helping out, trying to make sure that they have a space uh uh to, and so we we will, uh you know, public services uh as always is kind of at the front end uh of of that and so uh uh in any case, we we're 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 moving forward with respect to trying to make sure that as we bring people on, you know who they are and and that they have a place to work.
Thank you.
No more staff reports, correct? Uh moving on, uh Mayor and Council member reports, anybody have anything to report?
I report, um Imperial Valley Regional Chamber, they are having a legislati- legislative day tomorrow. Um it's actually in El Centro, July twentieth, from four to seven P M in the old post office pavilion. So if you're interested in meeting some of your local representatives, um they should have local state and federal representatives, some informational booths and some small business resources as well.
Uh do we need?
No. Yes. There's also appetizers, that's enticing.
Any other?
Um I did get to go to the uh other pool party we had and I always mess it up, so it's a movie at the at the pool. Yeah, that one, something like that, I just, it's easier to say, uh move, uh watch the movie at the pool. Um that was great to see, uh just kinda little tough to watch Jaws while you're trying to swim. But it was a good movie, I think that was a great turnout, there was a lot, a lot of people, so I did appreciate that, um. Well, thank you to that, the other one I did wanna say is, you know, for today's event, uh thank the staff. I know P D was out there working hard to keep making sure everybody was out of the area, uh our fire department uh has did an excellent job. I really appreciate all the hard work, um a lot of people don't know what it takes, doesn't, don't know what it goes into it. Um they think, oh, just do this and that, no, there's a lot more to it, so uh we really appreciate all the hard work that you do for the city. Uh all the departments do for our city, so thank you guys very much, um it's a collective effort, you know. It's not just done by one, but with that incident today, I think uh with police, fire, public works and everybody that was out there. You know, Thon's group was out there, everybody played a part, so thank you guys very much for for uh I'm not gonna say a good event, but uh, you know, for making something that could have gone bad uh come out the way we did, so thank you guys very much for that and with that, I uh you know, look forward to a good summer, stay cool, stay hydrated.
Get out of this heat if you can, it's going to be a miserable hundred and twenty-one tomorrow. Um and with that, uh I have nothing to report, but let's adjourn this regular meeting of the city council until next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on Wednesday, August second, se- August second, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. And I adjourn this meeting at eight oh five.